Okay, we're gonna move on. Item two on the agenda, continue discussion of ordinance amendment, chapter 134-71, utility accounts. BJ, do you have anything you want to add to that, or Joe?
I can start to review it, or do you want me to go and review a little bit?
Yeah, do a summary, high-level summary, please.
Alright, so town council discussed the bad debt on utility accounts a few times here in the past recent months. The ordinance change in the packet includes raising the minimum deposit amount by $25 as requested by council. There was more information that council had requested. As far as the ordinance changing reflecting action on bad debt, line was added, the town of Front Row shall take all lawful action to collect all debts owed to the municipality which have become overdue. We're proposing that be added. The section related to the business accounts requiring a personal guarantee was added, as well as the section for proof of income. We did, you'll see a copy of some documents in your work session packet there that would be applicable in order to enact, request the ordinance changes. The application requesting, request employment information, the service agreement, owner landlord authorization form, in lieu of a lease, if we have a lease, we wouldn't need the authorization form, and the personal guarantee. Establishing the utility account would become a little bit more cumbersome for our citizens to go this route. Staff does not recommend to pursue these ordinance changes at this time for the personal guarantee and the proof of income.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Staff does not recommend pursuing the personal guarantee nor the proof of income ordinance changes at this time.
For the businesses?
For either business or residential.
Okay. Is there a reason?
Yes, I was getting there.
I was just wondering if you're gonna keep the employment information lines on the application?
We certainly can.
Because that's all I was really saying, I didn't want you to go get someone's like tax returns or anything, just know who their employer is so things do go south.
Okay.
When you have to file a judgment, you have their employer.
And we certainly can on the application.
Yeah, I mean, it's simply them writing it out.
Okay. Yeah, the reason why is we collected information from other organizations. We, other municipalities, other electric companies. What we're finding is that the deposits that we're requiring are much lower than the average for the industry standard. Our deposits are basically $125, which in a lot of cases does not, I'm sorry, that's the minimum amount of the deposit, which would cover basically one month's bill. When you go to disconnect services for non-payment, we're already 60 days into, from the date of initial use until the date we disconnect, we're 63 or 62 days. So that initial deposit is not covering the amount of bad debt we could incur. So our recommendation is to increase the deposit amount.
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I reject a question?
Yes, sir.
When it comes to that, I was looking at your list here, most of them require at least two months of the highest rates, or a maximum of whatever it basically would be. Are we looking at that other than just a 125 to 150? Say that my bill is, say it's $200 a month, instead of paying the 400, we still only gonna pay the 125?
That's currently what we have, is the 125. Or the highest bill, if you have, if your bill is $200, your highest bill's $200 for the previous 12 months, then your deposit would be $200.
I know, but most of these are doubled then.
Exactly, exactly. My recommendation would be to do some sort of average of two months moving forward.
Instead of the actual 125?
Correct, correct.
And some could be higher, some could be a little lower.
Very well could be, but I'd want to make sure that it was while the property was occupied. So we'd actually see usage, a lot of times, we don't want, you don't, I don't want to see, you know, zero usage and my deposit's gonna be $10, which, you know, I want to see actual usage.
That sounds, sounds like a sort of high, but really when you're losing 30,000, 40,000 dollars a year in, in money that we're paying, the people that's paying their bills, and the other people getting off Scott Ferret, then I think that we need to reconsider that and make it a little bit higher.
So this is for people without established credit? This is for people without established credit or established utilities?
Yeah, sure. The others will take care of themselves in those cases.
Yeah, so if, let's say I was moving into a rental property and the previous 12 months, the previous tenant, their average bill was $400 a month, and I would have to pay a $800 deposit if I didn't have established credit?
That's correct, I mean, it would be based on the average, so we're not going off the highest bill, we are going off the average.
So I think doubling it would, in my opinion, it's not fair. Like where I live, our past two, not past two, but our highest two electric bills were $700. Somebody else has to come in and pay $1,400 to get their lights turned on, that's a lot of money to come up with.
Well, I mean, if...
And I saw that there were some municipalities on your list that are doing $100 deposits, and they're still at the same where we are, less than 1% are going into default.
Those municipalities only have water and sewer, we have electric.
Okay.
That's the big difference. There's only two municipalities in Virginia that have electric, Danville and Culpeper. If you look at their deposit rates, they're much higher.
They're different.
What's the minimum power, did you check? How they do it?
I think that my flip would be the only electric we didn't check, we had Rep. Hannock and Shendo co-operated.
That's fine, what would be, two times?
Two times, one estimated annual average.
So every, so, that's interesting. Okay, so, so your system would calculate the average, and then just say, we're gonna select the average and just multiply the...
Well, the system doesn't do it, it would be a manual calculation, but, but we're currently looking at manually now for the deposits.
How many, how many people would this, in your opinion, per year, how many?
About a third of our utility customers have, yeah, it's a...
Is there, is there any alternate solutions? Like, you know, you pay two times, or here's double deposit you have to make, or you back it up with an auto draft from your bank account every month on this date, and if it doesn't happen, then you're automatically in default, or credit card that's auto drafted, and if it doesn't happen, you're automatically in default, we immediately injure, you know what I mean?
Many of our citizens don't look for the auto draft because they choose to make payment agreements with us, they want to extend the due date out, so I don't, I wouldn't necessarily...
You set up, like a, like a payment plan, so they pay a flat fee every month?
Well, not a flat fee, but a, you know, they need a few more extra days on their utility, but, you know, I can't pay five at the 10th, can you give me to the 12th or the 15th?
Well, right, so, I mean, in that case, they, they might want to pay the deposit, but I'm just saying, like, here's your choices, you pay a deposit for security, or you set up this method of payment where we're guaranteed our payment at a certain time every month.
And...
I don't know, I'm just trying to think, this double utility bill, like double water, double sewer, double electric, first month's rent.
Yeah.
That's a lot of money for...
As you see, I mean, that is the industry standard.
But yeah, that is, for me, looking at the data, that is looking through to that deposit, that is why we're getting behind the, on some of these accounts, because the deposits are not covering.
I mean, don't get me wrong, our debt collection ratio is less than 1%, as you see, we're right in line with the other municipalities, but if we want to seek it lower, I think deposit is our best option.
Could, could we just split the deposit up in like six installments to add to their bill?
Yeah, very good, that's a good one.
How many default in the first six months?
We have a hard time now splitting them.
Well, I mean, if they default within six months, I mean, we're not out $10,000.
Currently, if the, if the deposit's over $200, we can split it up into payments over two months, and even then, we have difficulty collecting the deposit.
You see, after 12 months of, you know, or if they get their deposit back unless they have four or more...
That's correct.
Late payments, would it, would it make sense to put a cap? I mean, I'm all for raising it, but can we put a cap of, you know, it's just, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, $500?
Um, the, I wouldn't do it max, but unless you did it maybe for residential?
Well, yeah.
Yes.
If we did something like that for residential, that might be an option. I wouldn't do it for commercial banking.
No, I wouldn't either, I wouldn't either, I wouldn't, but for residential, I mean...
But there are some residential accounts that still get up to $1,000 a month bill. Ms. Thompson just said $700, so...
Talking about chopping that $69,000, you know, and I think that's what we're all after here.
This thing is still being, there has to be a way for, there has to be a happy medium. I mean, I still remember, you know, having my first kid, just finishing grad school, going to an apartment, and having a hell of a time just for the first month's rent, plus the utilities, I mean, that would've just been murder.
Yeah, but to make it two months of the average bill, but put a cap on it at $500 and...
That's not true.
Be an idea.
So it sounds like we have a lot, a lot of discussions still on this. Correct me if I'm wrong, don't think we're ready to take it to regular meeting, are we?
Okay, I get the principle behind it, and I agree, I just, on the other side of it, like, I just, I don't know how to find the happy medium.
Yeah, because it's the same with our workforce housing, and those are the people who are not poor enough to get assistance and services, and they're still not well-off enough where they're able to do all of this at once. And that's where most of our community lays, is right there in the middle, well, it's not even right in the middle.
Do you want...
Well, the biggest problem, yeah, I mean, the more we delay, the more we lose. So we need to pass something, and then we do it again later if we have to, because every, every day that we fall behind in the rears, that means we're losing more money. So we need to decide on 150 and 125, go ahead and pass it, and then we need to adjust it, we need to adjust it after we all come to an agreement.
I don't know why we wouldn't adjust to 200 right now.
I mean, I don't have a problem with that, but what I'm saying is, we need to make some, some decision.
The others said 250, we sell it to the lean, lean side at 200. I know the, the poor community we have is, because I, I remember like you, when I first got out of Marine Corps and went to college, I was struggling. And for people to come into this community, 200 bucks is a lot of money.
And it's balancing act, those are the same, so many of those ones are struggling, they're the same ones that leave five months and leave the citizens or...
And our, our bad debt ratio is not out of line for, for a municipality, we're right in line even with more stringent municipalities.
I'll, I'll go with 200. And we're talking 200 for residential, how much for...
Is that the minimum, or are we gonna do a flat, or...
Flat, 200.
Flat 200?
Yeah, our recommendation was raising the minimum to 250, or whatever, two times, the highest bill, whichever would be greater, but that was our recommendation coming out of the gate, but...
And that's water, sewer, and electric?
Yep.
Come on.
Times two.
Well, no, you just said 250, oh, or...
Yeah, 2 bills.
Whichever one is greater, was the original verbage on that?
Let's do, let's, we'll put 250, let's put 250 on, and then we can debate it, if you want to modify it.
Yeah, we want to change the commercial amount?
Yeah, we're gonna, I gotta talk commercial second, it's just residential. Are you guys, are you guys good with just 250 flat?
Yes.
250 flat.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
I know, my propane heater and all that, so I don't get the electrical, but my electrical bill, water and sewer, which we don't use much, it's only two of us, and my bill runs in around 170 a month, and I don't have any extras in that, so if you have a family of three or four, you're looking at 2, 225, 250, or more, if it's electric.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's a, yeah, there you go. Because, you know, the younger people takes more showers, and sometimes two and three a day, which my son does, and others, so, you know, when you, when you get somebody that's got the four kids or whatever, like Jake's got more than that, they're not teenagers yet. When they get teenagers, it's gonna double again.
That's great.
So, you know, again, we need to be, we're looking at this thing on a proactive basis to the fact that, that we're losing money, and we need to find this way to, to correct that. So if mine, with only just my wife and I, and ours is 270, with very little usage, then we need to consider that, 250's fine, but I still think we need to consider it later, but I'm willing to go ahead with the 250 if you all reckon that.
I think up it, up it as well, but...
Now, I would be more fan of upping the bill if there was an alternative solution for somebody, like if there's a way to, like, bring collateral to the table of some sort, or a quicker cutoff, or an agreement of some sort, where we could have a quicker cutoff, then I don't, I don't really care what it is, and two times, I think that, that's fine as long as they have a way to offset that somehow, make a choice.
Can you have a quicker cutoff?
No, ours, ours is the bear, I mean, we're pushing the line.
Agree to a quicker draw, like, you know, a quicker bank draft?
Right.
You know, if you have auto drafts at your bank, and we can draft it on this date, and you don't change that?
Right.
Then, because you'll know the second they change it.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Well, I, I think, here's what I suggested, you guys, you're the council, I just had the pleasure overseeing this. Why don't we go with the 250 for the works, for the regular meeting? And then, Joe, maybe four months later, if we can put it on a work session for consideration of what modifications to the residential rates do we need to, or residential process, is that reasonable?
250, now, is that, is that going to be, if you have electric, water, sewer, and garbage, or just electric, just operate?
It's everything.
So, if, if there's only one service, we're gonna charge 250?
250.
Yeah, do we have, yeah, do we have that option?
I mean, we have, there are some accounts that only have water service, and some accounts that only have electric service, so I'm just, want to make sure that we're clear that we're charging $250 even if they don't have...
We said residential.
If it's a residential with one service?
250.
Okay. So no...
Here, here's, here's the problem I got with it, I read through this whole thing. You're gonna, you're gonna cut somebody's electricity off, then you're gonna cut it back on, and then when they default again, you're gonna do it a second time, then you're gonna do it a third time, or a fourth time, a fifth time, and you're going $20, $30, $40, $50. That's ass a night. Make it one fee, $35, if you gotta go back out there and cut that electricity back on, $35. This multiples...
The multiples is a, something else is new to the industry, and it did help our shut-off rates, the amount of disconnects we did because of that tiered system, so it did help them.
35 now.
It went, the first time, I believe, is 20, 30, 40, then a maximum of 50.
That didn't make sense to me. The other thing that I was really concerned about, and I, I haven't picked it up yet, is one of the issues that I had was when you bring a million dollars to this council to write off, and I know we waited till the insurance, or there's, or tax payment would come back, and we manipulate all that. I thought we established that every quarter, we were gonna have a write-off, and we would approve it.
That's correct, and we did that.
Okay, I got that, but here's the problem. When you have a write-off, you ought to have on there, okay, we recovered this amount. You got the 200 or 150 that you withdraw from their account, and you apply it, we ought to see that alongside...
All of those accounts had no activity for five years, that's when we can write them off to the statute of limitations.
Why did we have all those write-offs in one year?
We hadn't written them off for 30 years.
When you write, you take it off our books now?
I do now, but previously, we did not.
All I'm saying is, okay, if we got that established, and I thought we did, why don't we see what the write-offs are, and that you, you acquire those payments or down...
Right, but what he's saying is, at the time, you see it, it's been five years and no activity.
No activity for five years. If there's been any activity, we don't have to write it off, and we can still collect on it. So there has not been any activity for five years on any of those accounts.
So you're wanting to...
I'm talking about... So you're talking about now?
Right.
Going forward?
Now, going forward.
Yeah, I'm talking about in accounting principle, you write the thing off, it's bad debt anyway you get, and you acquire what funds that you, you do it anyway, you're gonna report to us, we wrote off this much, and you, we recovered this much.
We're just still recording. But the last time, we just did it last Monday, our last meeting, it was a five-year though, that was a five-year thing, so are you saying that you want it done every, every quarter, like three months?
Yeah, it's a bookkeeping procedure.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding.
But it's still, regardless, when they write off, it's still a five-year window, because we're not writing off anything until after the five-year time limit is gone.
So that, $150 just stays in the escrow somewhere, and it keeps drawing interest?
The deposit?
No.
The deposit gets applied to the final bill, which would've been five years ago.
Yeah. We, we're always five years behind on these, these bad debts, right?
Well, we were seven.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, we were seven, yeah, now we're till five.
Correct.
I know what Bill's saying, exactly what you're saying, but I don't think we can apply it under this rule because we're five years in the rear.
Exactly, I mean, there's nothing, there's no, no activity for five years, so there's nothing to, to show, I might have to go back in history, you know, six to, well, at least six years, to show some sort of activity.
Jake, do you have a...
Yeah, two comments, back to BJ's original thing. I think what we're talking about is just going straight with option C. You were asking if we're gonna break it down, right, but this is a proposal?
Yes, exactly, yes, okay.
So going straight for option C?
Okay.
At 250?
Yep.
I see that you proposed 350 with that, and, and seeing the breakdown does make sense why, why you proposed the 350, like $200 for electric, you know, 100 for water and sewer, or 50, whatever, the 150 for water and sewer, that, that makes more sense to me, and frankly, I could even be behind that at the 350 on option C. One question that I just, so we can move that forward and not belabor this, but when we talked about requiring a personal guarantor, can, in the future, can we look at that as an option, as in, you're not required to provide a person or personal guarantor, but if 350 or whatever the future rate is decided, you have a mom and dad, or a relative or whatever, that is willing to be a personal guarantor for you on the account, then we won't require such a big deposit from that individual. Does that make sense?
So if you basically have a cosigner?
Yeah.
Then you don't have to put a deposit in?
I don't know.
I'd assign it nothing.
I don't know that we can put a, a name on the utility account that's not on a lease, or has authorization from the landlord. I think that would get us in a sticky situation, but if a personal guarantor, or cosigner might be the best option, or a personal guarantor, maybe I'm not gonna have a lot of proceedings.
Something along those lines, just giving them an option. Otherwise, I'm for option C. Frankly, I, I don't mind the 350, because the way it's broken down between electric and water, but if council signed the 250 on that, then that's fine.
Oh, I see.
I'm good with 250.
I'm good with 250.
I see. Sorry, guys, the commercial, explain to me what the policy is for the commercial, I got confused as you were highlighting.
Our current policy is the $200 minimum for commercial.
Minimum deposit?
Minimum deposit for still the highest bill for the previous 12 months if it always occupied. The, moving forward, if we're gonna do a flat rate on residential, I would recommend we do a flat rate of some sort of a commercial, but at the same sense...
That's any, any business, even in LLC?
Correct.
And there's no, there's no guarantee, no personal guarantee?
No. The, the commercials, maybe not even do a flat fee on those, because that is, we have some commercial accounts that are thousands of dollars every month. So I would really recommend sticking to some sort of average or, on a commercial account. Otherwise, the town could have a, more of a loss. But when I say commercial account, I'm talking about the type of service, not, not if a personals, personal name is on there, it's a commercial service, so we have commercial electric and demand meter or something like that.
I'm very familiar with that concept of commercial service. Why can't you do a personal guarantee?
We can't, and it's going to be a lot more cumbersome for our applicants. You see that paperwork is involved there?
It's an LLC, yeah.
No other municipality does it, no other...
I don't worry about other municipalities, I worry about Front Row.
I'm always asked to get a comparison, and that's what we do.
I, I'm telling you my personal opinion, that's why I brought it forward.
Understood.
Who are you recommending, BJ?
Well, my recommendation was to go with two months average bill, or...
And then strictly commercial?
I was saying across the board, but at this point, I would certainly do that for commercial, because like I say, some of our commercial accounts are very...
Well, if you're seeing that, and the turnover is that bad, I, I don't have a problem with that. But I, I'm like Bill, though, if you got an LLC, we need to have somebody responsible for the bill, somebody, John, John Henry on there, whatever it is.
They wouldn't be doing any more form work than a resident, because it looked like, looking at the form that you had created, it's just them filling in some blanks as well.
You have somebody come in to establish your utility account, then they need to have a personal guarantee signed, and then on top of it, if they're gonna figure out if they're gonna go with the personal guarantee or the additional deposit amount, and even so then, the additional deposit amount, had they choose to, say they choose to go with the personal guarantee and go with that additional deposit amount of, what, $375 I think we put on there, they have a $3,000 bill a month, it's not really offsetting us, so...
Joe, what's your input?
Well, we've got to come to a consensus to get moving on this, so it sounds to me that there may be a consensus for the deposit for the residential and possibly a commercial. The personal guarantee, I'm assuming we're talking for commercial only, right?
Right, yes.
And I personally, you know, I don't know how far we're from getting that off the ground, but I think that's not, I think that's doable. I mean, being that no other locality or municipality's doing it, if council's desire is to go down that road, we can make it happen, there's no doubt about that.
Really, how, I'm trying to think, I'm trying to think back, you really, how cumbersome is that, right? So if I'm an LLC, I've got, you know, Matt Teager LLC, and I go down to get an application for service, there's a form that, that I as the owner, or as the managing member of the LLC, am gonna personally guarantee, now if I'm the managing, let's take DuPont, or let's take a big corporation, right? Who's gonna personally guarantee a corporation like that? George?
They're in with definitely.
How would that be handled?
It wouldn't be, I don't think, in, in a setting like that, I don't, I don't think any employee would step forward and offer to be the guarantor.
Right.
But turning back to the LLC, you can have a trustee account, that's some trustee that could be me, or anybody, and be the trustee of the LLC, but I'm not the owner, all I do is I'm the trustee, so we need somebody's name on that account for that LLC. I mean, if you got your name on it, like Teager LLC, that's a different story.
No, I, no, I hear you, I think the point is, so for, LLC's just a different form of a corporation, so if it's a C corp, S corp, LLC, the proposal would be that we would have a personal guarantee, an individual, or an agent, you know, acting on behalf of that corporation. I don't know, I don't know that you, I don't know, that could be a problem.
Let's try it and see if it works.
You never know till you try.
We have everything in the ordinance and the, the form built up, it hasn't been vetted by legal yet, but we can certainly give it a shot, like you say, with the big corporations, DuPont, Walmart, things like that, I don't know who may...
How are you doing now?
We don't have a, we have a deposit on file, we don't have a personal guarantee.
$350, or what?
Well, it's the highest, highest bill for the previous 12 months, so we have one month, basically.
And those companies aren't gonna care.
Yeah, they don't...
What if you did, what if you did, what if you did the average two months, or personal guarantee?
It's what I was...
Yeah, I agree, I think that, looking at the commercial side, two times is definitely required.
If we went that route, would you, would you refund the deposit after 12 months of good credit for a corporation, or keep it on hand?
At the end of their...
Once the, and that's my...
Shut shop, yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly where I was getting at.
No, you'd give it back after they concluded their business, if they moved on, or whatever the case is, but not before then.
Now, this is subject to a public hearing, right?
Yes.
Excellent, I think, I think this is, I think, I'm sorry, we, we want to hear from the business on this, and maybe if you could reach out to the chamber and let them know the proposed, and maybe in the duck parsons, I think it'd be good to get input. I think we're on the right track of having, having ideas, and, okay, anything else?
Is that gonna be legal problems, to hold on to their deposit? When we're willing to give others back, you know, is that...
It's just like when you write something, you get your deposit back when you leave.
First of all, it's a, it's a contract, so, but yes, you, being a public entity, we need to treat everyone the same.
everyone the same. Your point being, residential is a class, treat them the same, treat commercial class the same. I, I think that flies.
Okay. We wanna write an ordinance up for two months, uh, two months deposit on a, uh, for a commercial account, or a personal guarantee?
Right, that's everything.
Okay. I guess we're, that's a starting point. Um, at least, you, you agree with that, Joe, the start?
Yeah, I'm good with that, as well, as if, if I heard correctly, a two-fifty on the residential. So what we can do is, if that is the direction of council tonight, we can work on getting that put forward for a public hearing, rather than be put in the paper and run twice in a week, so we probably wouldn't make it. The council will probably do it late July, early August. I'm not for sure. I'd have to run the numbers to see.
I, I don't wanna prolong this thing, but I'm still concerned with this twenty, thirty, forty, fifty. I, you know, I've lived in this community forty-seven years. I have never had you cut my electricity off, never. Now, who goes out five times and requests you to cut your electricity off?
Well, it's not a request, it's often not needed.
Well, that's what I understand.
And once you get up to the, to the fourth time, we start seeing less of them.
You pay your bill. That's why you don't worry about it.
And I think-
My, my point is very simple.
There's people that are struggling, Bill. People that might not have, my, people that, you know, and people that are struggling. There, there's other people besides you living front row of Warren County that-
I've struggled all my life. I've-
Well, there's other people that struggle too, but you keep warning about you, you know, I'm glad you've been here forty-seven years, and I'm glad you never had your power turned off, but there's other people that not as fortunate as you.
And we will make payment arrangements with those customers if they contact us before service is terminated. So we're doing everything in our power to avoid this connection of service.
And you're saying that's reduce the number that you've done? So, I mean, if it's working, and you're the expert, I say continue.
Yeah, but why are you escalating?
So your point, is your point-
To deter them.
Is, is your point to keep a, have a fixed, a flat rate?
Yeah, a flat fee. That's why I said thirty-five dollars.
And that's what it was previous, I believe it was thirty dollars previously, and the escalation took it down to twenty, and then escalated back up, and, exactly.
All right, so let's do this. If everyone's in agreement. Joe?
Oh, I was just gonna say, we can, we can reestablish that number if you want. I mean, this was previous council that dictated this ramp-up of trying to discourage multiple disconnects.
And like your escalation is twenty bucks per second.
I like the escalation, the twenty dollars makes sense. You do, you, you get your electric turn off once, and you have to pay the twenty dollars. You're, the next time you're gonna know, I can call and make a payment arrangement and avoid that extra case, because fifty, you're already, you're punishing somebody who already can't pay their bill, at that point, if you're doing fifty for them.
Okay, so let's, 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 uh, as electrifying as this topic has been, um, let's, let's, uh, let's do this. We have, you have sense of council for what we want the proposal to be published. Bill, if you feel strongly that you wanna have a fixed rate, you can always amend, amend the proposal at the meeting, and see if-
I don't feel strongly about it. It's extra work for-
It would actually make life easier on my staff to have a flat fee. I'm not gonna-
That's what I'm thinking.
You just said it, you don't have these.
It, it decreases the, it decreases the amount of turnoffs we have, but the tiered system is a track, we have to track them in my office, and it is more.
Correct.
A year and a half ago, a lot of us at this table passed that. A year and a half, it's been about a year and a half ago. I was here.
He recommended it, didn't he?
No, 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 no.
But it's working.
Sorry. But no, BJ, thank, thank, you've done a, you've done a milman job in trying to get us through this, so, thank you. You have a good sense of the council, Joe, you good? Okay.